Good evening, everyone. It is six, it is 6:30 PM. I will call the Tuesday, June 4th, meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the place of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councillor LeDene, Councillor Van Sickle, Councillor Moffett,
Here.
Councillor Sweeney, Councillor Fennessy, Councillor Elm, Vice President Ludwig, Councillor Herrick, Councillor Johnson, Councillor, or President Graski.
We have a quorum.
Item 4.1 is the approval of the May 21st, 2024, regular council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Councillor Herrick, second by Councillor Elm. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 6.1 is a report from Mayor Payne.
Good evening again, councillors. I don't have much of substance to report. If I seem a little tired, distracted, bug bit, and windburnt, it's because it was Tree Tribute Day today. It was our longest ever, and so I just wanted, with the most tributes and the longest day, I said all day, this is probably, if this program continues to grow, going to be our last day where we fit them all in one day. I hope by now, most of you know about the Tree Tribute Program, but for anybody that doesn't, it's very simple. If you get an application in before the end of the calendar year, we will plant, there is a cost, it's a few hundred dollars, two or $300, I believe. We will plant a tree for whatever person or cause you see fit. We've seen them planted for all sorts of causes, for groups, for organizations. Mostly, by, the vast majority folks plant them in memory of somebody that has died. And so, we dedicate them all directly, and they're spread across the city. They are not limited to parks. We've planted them on boulevards and people's, in front of people's houses. We planted them along trails, in the forest, on a number of occasions. And so, it's becoming much more popular. We receive a lot of compliments on it. The trees are doing very well. And the Parks Department puts, Parks, Rec and Forestry Department and the Urban Forestry Tree Board do an outstanding job promoting and helping to celebrate the program, which, while not unique in the nation, is, I've learned, relatively unique in the North Woods. So, please, as you walk around the community, take a look at those trees, send a thank you to our department and that committee, and consider buying a tribute tree next year. The other thing I wanted to bring up, we're about halfway through the year, and during the budget last year, I reminded you all that we have set aside a travel budget for the city council. A few times, I've encouraged you to use it. This is a message that I deliver to the department heads fairly regularly, both at budget time and in their reviews, that is there for you to use it. It's not a vacation fund, it's a training fund. And obviously, you all know that I very much enjoy traveling around the state, sometimes the country, learning about how to build great cities. But I encourage you to do that, too. And the message I delivered to department heads is, one, you need to learn. You are professionals and leaders here. Everybody needs to continue to learn and grow. But also, you need exposure to your peers. This is, you do relatively lonely work. You have a very different job than the Duluth City Council or the towns and villages of Douglas County. And there are not a lot of your peers up here in the North. We are very far away from the other cities like us in Wisconsin. Bridge that gap, see how other folks are doing things. I know you've all had sleepless nights and stressful days doing this work. There are other folks going through that, too, that have solved the problems that plague you. So, it, I know it's tough, but try and carve out something. Look around. If you, if you need an easy suggestion, I always recommend the Annual Conference of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, which is this fall. That's why I'm bringing this up now. So, if you have not gone to that, even if you have, I recommend going again, unless you found something else of significance to travel to. If you have an interest in some particular part of municipal policy, let us know. We'll help find a way to get you there. We just all do a little bit better when we go to these idea factories. That's all I had, that's all I had to say. What's your questions?
All right. Item 7.1 is the business of the Human Resources Committee with a meeting held on May 20th. Is there a report from the Chair?
Thank you. I'll just briefly say that several years ago, we got a pretty large report from RW, who did something of an assessment on the city. And the Human Resource Committee has been diligently trucking through those recommendations. And digitizing a lot of our operations was a priority, not only for RW, but for the city as well. So, not only just in finance and payroll software, but in this case, we reviewed the Tyler, the former, the formerly Tyler Technology software that has been implemented in building inspection. And since that has gone digital, permit applications have increased, and contractors and residents are really getting through the learning curve. And that process has, I think, by all measurable accounts, improved the ability to apply for a permit, particularly outside of office hours in the city. And on the staff side, it's improved the process, just because you can track the permit, see what's missing, follow up if there are compliance issues, and all of that is accessible immediately and across the staff. So, you're not looking for paper folders and things like that. So, the, those folks came to give us that update. In addition to that, there were a couple of requests to fill in ESD and Parks and the Fire Department due to retirements and resignations. So, I, sorry. There are no recommendations. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 7.6 is the business of the Committee of the Whole Meeting with a meeting held on May 30th. Is there a report from the Chair?
There's no report.
All right. 8.1.1 is the business of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Their meeting was on May 23rd. Is there a report from the Chair?
Yes, there is. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At the Parks and Rec meeting held May 23rd, we had a really great, robust discussion on a possibility of a historical marker in Aloeese for the Edmund Fitzgerald. There's an ad hoc committee comprised of Councillor Van Sickle, Teddy Maronic, Kathy Lasko, and Brianna Fidette, led to a, led to a discussion at the Parks and Rec Commission about obtaining this, this historical marker somewhere in the Aloeese area. This was kind of proposed as a way to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Edmund Fitz, which is next year. The cost of the marker, approximately $6,200, with which they hope to raise through fundraising efforts. Several locations were discussed, and the conversation will continue at our September meeting. As for the action items before the council, there's an approval of a lighting upgrade contract. The plan is to relocate lights from Veterans Memorial Park Softball Field and the tennis courts to Hayes Court Softball Field and the Heritage Skate Park. Along with that, there will be an installation of a new lighting system at the Wade Bowles Softball Fields. The second action item is an agreement with cyclists of the Gitchigumi Shores, COGS, to utilize equipment and work on agreed-upon trails in an effort to expand Superior's mountain biking trail system within the city. We also had a discussion regarding a pay-for-play model for the disc golf in the city of Superior. As disc golf has become extremely popular, the wear and tear on the areas has led to extra time, effort, and money being put into, into the disc golf courses. The goal is to start with a QR code for donations for the disc golf maintenance, and then have a deeper discussion at Parks and Rec on the September meeting about a pay-for-play. Just a few things going on throughout the Parks and Rec Department. We had a great turnout on May 22nd for the skate park rebuild, the roundtable, 35 or so people. The survey, I think, actually closed yesterday on that, if I remember correctly. And we will be looking forward to seeing the initial designs from grid line for that. Bayside Sound schedule is now available. Woodstock, Woodstock Bay is nearing completion. Rick from the Parks Department, 32 years of service to the city, retired recently. We thank him for that. And the summer playground program starts June 17th, which I cannot say enough of, is an amazing program, and I for one will be enrolling my kids as soon as possible. On top of that, I have nothing else to report. I do ask the clerk if she would split the recommendations separately before voting on them. Thank you.
All right. The first recommendation is to approve the lighting upgrades contract to electromechanical contracting incorporated in the amount of $287,059.36.
Motion is by Councillor LeDene, second by Councillor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 2 is to approve the Trails Plan Agreement with Cyclists of Gitchigumi Shores Incorporated.
Motion is by Councillor LeDene, second by Councillor Graski. Is there discussion? Councillor Ludwig?
Yes. Well, while I approve this as part of the Parks and Rec Commission, with all due respect to our Urban Forestry Tree Board, we just approved a master plan for the municipal forest last fall. And I know a big part of this plan will involve the municipal forest, so I would like to amend this a motion. And, and I do welcome any input from, from the councillors this evening, but I would like to refer this item to the Urban Forestry Tree Board for approval before a council approves it in the end.
Motion is to refer to the Urban Forestry Tree Board. Is there a second? Second is by Councillor Graski. The motion was by Councillor Ludwig. Discussion on the motion to refer? Should say, Councillor Ludwig and I spoke to Director Kadat this afternoon about it, and she reached out to COGS as well, to let them know of, of Councillor Ludwig's goal to refer this, and, and ask them to attend that meeting and carry out that discussion, which I should say, I support. I believe that there's, we put quite a bit of work into designing very specific goals around the forest that is, that is not even done today. And I think it would, it would really benefit COGS to build a better master plan if they had a thorough understanding of the city's goals around the forest. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1.2 is the business of the Wisconsin Point Committee with a meeting held on May 29th. Is there a report from the Chair?
I don't believe the Chair's here, so we can move on to the recommendation.
The recommendation is to approve the Visitor Use Assessment Agreement with Legacy Works Group in the amount of $40,000.
Motion is by Councillor Ludwig, second by Councillor LeDene. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
At this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made? All right. Moving on to old business. Item 9.1 is the intent to terminate Superior Public Museum's memorandum of understanding.
So, councillors, we have a, I've heard a number of points of discussion around this. I think, in terms of procedure, it would be best if we put a motion on the floor first, and we can decide how to dispose of that motion. The way this is worded does not have a time limit notice, so I think I'd have to interpret that as the 90-day notice, unless the motion contains a different date. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second to the motion? Motion is by Councillor Sweeney, second by Councillor Graski, to terminate Superior Public Museum's memorandum of understanding. Councillors, do you object to me considering that a 90-day notice, intent to terminate in 90 days? That's the soonest we could terminate the MOU. Councillor Sweeney?
What's the starting date of that? Today? Tomorrow?
If it, if it's adopted today, I think tomorrow would be the first day, yes.
Thank you. Just for clarification.
Councillor Johnson?
Thank you. I know I've spoken to a few people...
I'm sorry, Councillor Johnson. Unless I have clarification, I think I need the motion to specify a date. The, the MOU provides for a requirement that we give at least 90 days' notice. So, Councillor Sweeney and Graski, who made the motion, I just need clarification. Do you acknowledge that this is intent to terminate in 90 days, absent any other changes? Is that your understanding of your motion? Okay. Thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you for that clarification. I guess I'm, what would be the, my brain is pretty mush at the end of the school here. What would 90 days be from today? If anybody has a calendar that they could roughly...
Few days, wait, few days into September, yes.
Few days into September. I guess we'll make an amendment to that and add 30 days to that, and I'll just call it October 1st, to give SPM and an opportunity to negotiate the contract. This is their busiest time of year, and so I would hate to put them into a tough position. And so, I'll add, make an amendment to add 30 days to that 90-day notice.
30 days, or, or did you want it to be on October 1st?
That's why I was looking for a date. If we just call it October 1st, I think that would make things a little easier.
That, that motion is in order. The motion is to amend to terminate the Superior Public Museum's memorandum of understanding on October, strike out 90 days and on, and terminate on October 1st.
2024.
2024. Is there a second to the motion to amend? The second is by Councillor Herrick. I have a, I owe you an apology, councillors. We did have at least one person sign up to speak on this, and I moved a little too quickly. Do you have objection to me pausing the discussion here to call up public comment? Does anybody object to that? Okay. We are going to pause, recognizing that the current question before us will be whether to amend the main motion. The main motion either way will be whether to terminate, the amendment be whether to terminate on October 1st or in 90 days. In terms of public comment, if you'd still like to, the person, the first person I have signed up is Caitlin Baumann, if you'd like to address the council. Just a reminder, our rules are still three minutes. I will give you a 30-second warning.
Good evening, Superior City Council members. Mayor Payne, I'm Caitlin Baumann, Board President of Superior Public Museums. SPM has demonstrated financial responsibility, strong management, and positive engagement with the city over the past 20 years. This can be seen by our fiscal records and responsibility, robust community engagement and events, site maintenance and enhancements, proactive communication and outreach with the city, and a strong partnership between our board and staff to manage these three sites. As shared at the last city council meeting, the agenda item being discussed tonight is continuing or dissolving SPM's current memorandum of understanding with the city of Superior. Our request is that the city maintains its relationship with SPM, whether by a current or short-term continuation of the MOU, or a new one-to-three-year contract. We understand that the current MOU is not ideal as a standing agreement, and are not advocating to maintain it indefinitely. We are in agreement that a stronger contract with increased communication and collaboration between the city and SPM has benefits for all parties. We are open to discussions about what this would look like, and feel this would meet the city and SPM's needs. We are asking for this agreement that the city allows SPM to continue focusing on our operations for these next three busy months of the summer. Summer, as Councillor Johnson mentioned, is our busiest time of the year, with all three sites opened, our highest number of visitors and tourists, and our signature event, Fairlawn's Ice Cream Social. Next, I would like to briefly just speak to the discussion surrounding potential merger with Douglas County Historical Society. Our board and staff have continued to express interest in strong collaborations with DCHS. We know that SPM can provide DCHS with the exhibit space they desire at a more highly trafficked sites. Discussing these needs and mapping out exhibit scheduling plan is something we would like to work on immediately, while discussing and exploring more long-term partnerships. A large number of DCHS and SPM board members met early last week on Friday for our first joint session. It was a good get-to-know-you meeting that was facilitated by Linda Kadat. We introduced ourselves and discussed the strengths of each organization. Our next meeting is on June 10th. In summary, we are asking that the city not dissolve SPM's MOU at this time, and instead refer this back to the Finance Committee, whereupon we would share regular updates regarding a potential merger, and then together, the city and SPM could continue the dialogue and begin active negotiations on a contract for SPM to continue the management of the three sites. Once the contract is finalized, the MOU would be dissolved. With the merger, the contract would shift to the new organization. We want to again express we are open-minded and committed to engaging in active conversations with DCHS surrounding a potential merger and increased collaborations. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in public comment? Anybody else like to speak to the overall question of museums? If not, councillors, thank you for your indulgence. I will bring us back into regular order. The question in front of us, there has been no discussion, is whether to amend, the main motion was to terminate Superior Public Museum's memorandum, memorandum of understanding in 90 days. It's a motion to amend 90 days to October 1st. Discussion on that amendment. Councillor Sweeney?
If I'm not, I believe I'm correct. We've already extended it for 30 days. This, this is coming for this board the second time, so we already put it in limbo, if you would, for 30 days. This is the, to eliminate the memorandum. It's not anything to do, the main item was to get rid of this to develop a better contract, a better agreement between the city and the public museums. I think it should go forward. We've given you 30 days to 120 now, with this proposal, 150 days, which I'm against. I don't know what would benefit to bring back to the Finance Committee, because I think what our intent is on both sides is to develop a better document for both the city and for the, for the museum. For that reason, I'm, I'm against extending it. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson?
I think it's, was it just two weeks ago that we extended this, right?
Yes.
So, it's only been 15 days or 14, not 30. But I, I guess my point in extending it another few days would be to make sure that we give them the time in the summer to look over that contract. Has the city made any headway in the 14 days on producing a contract for them to review yet?
The city is working on a draft that represents, I believe, our interests, the city's interests. That, of course, at this point is difficult to gauge. I can speak for the administration's interest, what I think is in the best interest of the city after consulting with staff. And we do have a draft contract ready to start those discussions. But as I'm sure you're aware, this question is very much in the hands of council. And if, if you'll tolerate a slightly longer answer, councillor, the process of developing a contract with an organization is, can be very involved, can drag out, because it's a collaborative process. We've done it a number of times. It's usually played out in the Finance Committee. It usually does result in delays. I should point out, those delays always have protected the organization at hand. So, if there's a standing agreement that expires, the Finance Committee, I think, has typically done a good job of extending it where necessary. But it's, that process of what is our interest, what does a contract negotiation look like, that typically plays out in the Finance Committee. And I'd also point out that this, this is on the agenda for the Finance Committee. They've scheduled it for a recurring item. I've probably answered more than you asked, but...
You asked a couple of, I think you answered my follow-up questions without having to ask them, so I appreciate that. I guess my, my hope is that, exactly what you said, that we would be able to continue this work with SPM while, while they both negotiate a contract with the city and start discussions with the possible merger. That's a lot to take on for any organization, and likely those mergers can take, you know, quite a while. And so, to put a little bit of extra time between the dissolved MOU with the city, the contract negotiations, and that merger, is the reason for that, for that motion to extend it to October 1st. I'm all for dissolving MOUs. I don't think they're much, worth much more than the paper they're printed on, and so going towards a contract, I think, is the right move here. I'm just trying to give them the grace that they deserve in working with our city for the last 20 years. I think 30 days is an easy ask.
Councillor Elm?
I think some of the questions were answered in just that discussion there, but I'd like to, for those who are not on the same page at the moment, like, the, the intent of this was to clean up the MOUs and, and make it a contract, like we're doing all, all the MOUs in the city. And there's an opportunity here with the director leaving that potentially we can consolidate. I mean, is there kind of the narrative of this? Because in the council packet, there's no memo explaining what we're doing here. Could you kind of summarize where we're going? And also, to appease both organizations, especially the museums, like, what happens after, whether it's 90 days or 120 days? Say we're 80% there. You know, just to appease them, what are we going to do? Are we going to extend it? Sounded like that was an option. But certainly, we'll want to make sure that we support our organizations in the city while we clean up and do some housekeeping. Could you set the narrative and the intent to where we're going with this?
Yes. But I don't think I'm going to do as good a job as you just did, councillor. You were far more concise than I'm about to be. We have a kind of a two-part process here. Two real questions that are going to be in front of the council over the next couple of months. The first is, what will, what, if any, will the city's relationship be with the Superior Public Museums? The question of a merger was brought to the city. It was a proposal by Douglas County Historical Society, and I've always been free with my opinion. It sounds to me like a really good idea with what I know today. I have, I have not had extensive discussions on it. We have not dived into any of the level of detail that I'm sure you and other councillors are used to when we ask these kind of questions. So, it sounds like a good idea in theory, but that's something that I think those two organizations need to work together on, to see if that works for them, and then present a solution to the city to see if that works for us. The city has its own goals, though, and, and as you described, we're cleaning up a lot of MOUs. I, I would clarify that, that we're, we're changing and strengthening our relationships, because they're not all MOUs. Sometimes we have a contract that expires, and it's been a contract for a very long time. The animal shelter was a 10-year contract that most of us weren't here at the time. Or there is no real agreement, and we need to create one. Like, when we've given grant funding out, built it right into the general fund budget, we started making DCHS apply for that via grant application. So, we're reviewing any expenditure of money and, in a relationship, and we're kind of, we've been kind of going through those one by one. How, and then your final question, how would that look if we get to the end of the process and we just don't know where we are? I should say, my only interest tonight, I think we need to have some kind of deadline. Doesn't have to be final. I don't have a strong opinion on where it would need to be, but I do think that our two, the two areas we should be looking at is, one, the early fall, because I have to write a budget and submit it to you by the first Tuesday in October, and I need to know how much to award to the organization managing our museums. I will be looking at that question more closely. Nobody should panic over that. You all know me, that number is more likely to be higher than lower, but I need to know who I'm giving it to and how much. The other is the end of the year. Contracts tend to end at the end of the year. I'm, like, I'm perfectly comfortable waiting that long, but we should know some answers by then. And then, but what happens if, if we don't have an answer? I, I think the Finance Committee has, has already shown that. We would almost certainly ask the existing organization to just continue operating until we answer the question and fill it in. And so, I, I don't think we're going to be operating with any level of surprise or blindside. We're going to give lots of notice. That's, again, what we did with the animal shelter. That agreement definitely expired, and it was three months after it expired before we created the new contract. We just kept extending the previous contract until we figured out, sorted out the deal. So, that's, that's the kind of process we're looking at. It's a lot of conversation that I think ends with a strong agreement with an organization, either Superior Public Museums or a, an collaboration of the two organizations. One of those two, whatever looks best and whatever terms we think are best fit for the city's interests. See what I mean? You did much better than I did.
No, thank you. I may have more questions later, but I'll let the other councillors ask things.
I believe Councillor Moffett was next.
I have a, could I ask the applicant a question, or ask SPM, or is that not in order?
It's not generally in order, particularly since we're discussing an amendment related to time. I, since I know that this subject will be at committee this month, I'm reluctant. I'd entertain a motion...
It's specifically related to the amendment.
I tell you what, why don't you ask me your question, and I would do my very best to answer it, and I'll seek help if I can.
Okay. Thank you. My, I guess I have some comments to make, too, but my question is, I'm, was given the information or under the impression that SPM has extended a contract to their current executive director to help with things over the summer? And my understanding is that their contract is for 90 days, which would indicate to me that that's the time that they felt they could get this work done. But I'm not sure if that's accurate or not.
Does counsel object to me? That question is relatively germane to the amendment, so does the council object to me asking that question?
No.
Ms. Baumann, do you mind answering?
Yes. To answer your councillor question, Councillor Moffett, yes, we have...
Yes, to answer your Counselor question, Counselor Moffett, yes, we have a temporary plan of action post our current executive director's departure for the summer months. Summer months are our busiest time of year, so we had a plan of action for that summer month for a short interim. Megan will be consulting with us to aid in that transition over the summer, and our staff, our hourly staff, are taking on some of those additional duties and responsibilities since our hiring process has been paused. Is that, do you like additional details, Counselor?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The floor, Secretary.
Okay, thank you. So I don't have a strong feeling about the 90 days or the October 1st, or the end of the year, or whatever. I would say that generally, for the city's perspective, shorter is probably better, and then it can get extended indefinitely as needed. But I just like, I prepared a statement, and I'd like to read it, and I've got some questions. There are paper copies available. Heidi has some, and also PDF version, if anyone is interested. So, Mayor Payne, members of the council, I believe that we currently do not have the information we need to make a decision about the future of museum operations in Superior. Counselor Fennessy talked about some of the positive possibilities in sharing a joint collections position during last year's budget process, and I believe it's both correct, and yet only the first part of a greater conversation. Over 20 years ago, DCHS, the Douglas County Historical Society, moved out of Fairlawn and purchased a building for a separate museum at John Avenue. Superior Public Museums was created to fill community need and serve the taxpayers by managing not only Fairlawn, but also the Fire and Police Museum and Meteor. At the time, it was greatly acknowledged by the community that benefits the city by combining museum operations. Why should each have their own director, their own curator, their own marketing specialist, their own accountant, et cetera? The city has held this MOU for over 20 years, and now, as we look at all the MOUs, we have an opportunity to evaluate how the millions of taxpayer funds have been used, how the organization is currently functioning. After all, in the years since these arrangements were created, all of the people involved with SPM have changed, as have the city leadership and DCHS staff and leadership. Counselor Herrick spoke about misinformation in the community at the last council meeting regarding a potential museum collaboration, or merger, or whatever, and there is a lot of negative hearsay going around. It is in the public's best interest to know what information is factual before we can make decisions about either SPM or DCHS. It wouldn't be professional or fair to make a decision based on negative rumors. And SPM should have every opportunity to make a case publicly without being put on the spot at a meeting. So in the interest of not repeating or acting on rumors, I ask my colleagues to give them time to prepare information for our July council meeting. Here is the information that I am requesting in order to make an informed decision. My colleagues may wish to add to this list with their diverse backgrounds and experiences. Point of order, would you like me to read all of the questions, or can I just submit?
Be a contract, be ready to go once that actually expires, so that there's, you know, no void in between the MOU and a contract?
Yeah, that would definitely be the goal. I can't remember who said it already, possibly Ms. Bowman, but the, a perfect scenario would have us creating a contract that both parties agree to, and one of the provisions would be that it terminates immediately all previous agreements. So say we come up with a contract next month, unlikely, but possible. If everybody's happy with that contract and signs it, we would have that terminate the previous one. But definitely, we would want the, so that's the best-case scenario. If we get to the end, and we don't have a contract yet, but we're close, I think we should be extending the agreement. The worst-case scenario is negotiations break down, and let's be honest about what that looks like, where if an organization, like, there's no way we will agree to these terms, but the city is saying that is an absolute deal breaker, we must have these terms, and by the city, I mean you, the city council, we reach that impasse, then we have to consider much more extreme options, like seeking out a different organization to run it, putting it out to bid, or the city managing these facilities ourselves. Those are substantial, I would argue. Today, I would call those negative consequences without significant preparation.
Thank you.
Counselor Vansickel.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I just, I'm hesitant to speak just because I've never served on SPM or DCHS committees. I know a number of folks here have. I can only speak from the perspective of a finance committee member and this discussion. And the finance committee never disparaged SPM's management. We have, and equally, we did not lift up the management of DCHS. We never said that a contract was contingent on a merger. That's a, in my opinion, a totally separate issue. If those organizations find that that's the best arrangement, that's likely very positive. But nobody has made that case to me. I have not seen a proposal. I have not, and just for the record, now I'm jumping around because I'm nervous, but these questions that Counselor Moffett submitted are questions that we ask every single grantee that comes forward, as long as it's more than $1,000. These are all questions that we ask. And I just want to, for a moment, separate what I understood the finance committee's goals to be, and that was to get a contract in place with SPM. And in my experience, organizations are usually ready before we are. We are still working through this list of questions, understanding more about them. Because we've had a couple of weeks, I've had an opportunity to converse a bit with SPM and some folks that feel, you know, strongly and proud of their leadership, and I've gotten to learn more about the museums, I think, in the last two weeks than I have in maybe five years. So that has been, in my opinion, positive. And I wish that this didn't feel contentious, because it has been just a positive learning experience for me. So thank you for taking the time to work me through that. It is a lot of information, and you are disturbingly fast. But I just know you to be, the museum is very responsive to my questions. So I think, but to that respect, the MOU says 90 days, and I think if the shoe were reversed, and they were asking us for a termination, and we were trying to negotiate the date, and the MOU said 90 days, I think that's part of the reason a contract is so important, because things just aren't clear. So I think with respect to the MOU, we should stick to the terms in there, which are 90 days. And we'll get through the information. I did encourage SPM to review some of the contracts that finance has approved. There might be terms or conditions that they like and that they don't like, that they can bring forward. You know, I just, the word terminate is really tough for me, but that's, I didn't write the MOU. So with respect to that language, I would be inclined to honor that term. Thank you.
Just a reminder, Counselors, everybody has spoken to the amendments, and nobody's out of order here, but we're also speaking to the main motion, whether to terminate. So it's, for now, I think we'll have plenty of time to debate. Let's try and come to a decision about this question of when we would terminate. And everybody will have a chance to be recognized on the main motion as well. Counselor Fennessy.
If you would prefer, we can get that motion out of the way to, for October 1st, and then have general discussion. I can wait if we want a first vote on that to just clean that up.
Yes, if you don't want to speak, if you don't have an opinion on the date that you want to express, okay, then I do have some other lights on. Counselor Grasky.
I just have a question. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to lay a timeline. I'm trying to lay the timeline from the finance meeting. And obviously, people knew information going into the finance meeting that was on May 9th, the one that we're specifically, that got us to this point, because that last council meeting, it got brought to this council meeting, this exact MOU. So we're sitting at exactly 30 days today, would be from how I understand, maybe information was given to then both parties on beginning of that week of May 9th?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to start counting from the finance committee where we did, yes, I would agree with that. That's kind of close to 30 days that we're going to do this. That was a unanimous recommendation of the finance committee. Then it, so that was about 30 days ago. The postponement from the council was about 14 days ago.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify how this can also equal 120 if we start this 90 days tomorrow. I'm just trying to explain that as however somebody wants to compute it in their head. I just, for me, that looks like 120 days from the start of information.
In terms of, I checked the actual date. By my count, which I think works out very cleanly, if the amendment fails, but the main motion passes, it would be a 90-day notice. That would terminate the MOU on Tuesday, September 3rd. That is 90 days from tomorrow. That also happens to be the date of a city council meeting. It is Tuesday, September 3rd, which, for those saying we could extend it, that would be a kind of break glass in case of emergency last-minute extension, but you'd be meeting that day. And then, of course, Counselor Johnson's motion was quite clear that it would be October 1st, which is also a city council meeting, that also happens to be our budget meeting, where I present that, I don't think that factors a lot, but it is the point at which I can make no further decisions on the budget. In fact, the day before that, I will have had to have published that budget for, actually, no, I could make a last-minute change that day. So yes, both city council dates, the second one is the budget date. I'm not offering that as an opinion, just if it helps your decision. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Sweeney.
Let me reiterate this one more time. The city management, plus the finance committee, has done yeoman's work in getting things done right, giving these varying organizations, where we've already done this, more time than whether it be 90 days or 120 days. If they have a question, we can certainly move it on. But my point is, let's get this started, and if in 90 days, we don't have an agreement, then we will extend it beyond. But I think it's important to start the time, the clock running. Thank you.
Less there's further discussion. The question is whether to amend, to change the date of termination from 90 days, which would be Tuesday, September 3rd, to Tuesday, October 1st. I honestly don't have a sense of the room, so I will proceed by roll call. Yes, amends the question to Counselor Johnson's preferred, October 1st. No, keeps the main motion at 90 days, which is Tuesday, September 3rd. Any questions on the motion? Then, will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor LeDine.
Yes.
Counselor Vansickel.
No.
Counselor Moffett.
No.
Counselor Sweeney.
No.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Elm.
No.
Counselor Ludwig.
Yes.
Counselor Herrick.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Grasky.
It's a tie. The chair votes in favor, and the motion passes. I, Counselor, I should have explained it before, voting. The, I think we would do just fine with 90 days. I do trust the finance committee to extend it. I also trust this council to extend it as necessary. I think I can come up with a number before this. I trust you to get me close enough to know what I'm going to be budgeting for by that point. I'm also trusting you to stick to the deadline that you are giving this organization, and I think we're going to put most of this work on the finance committee. Let's try to get an answer here by October 1st. I'm not offended by a little bit more time. In fact, if I'm being honest, I probably would have been comfortable with even more time than this. So that makes the main motion whether to terminate the Superior Public Museums Memo of Understanding on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Discussion on that motion. Counselor Fennessy.
I think realistically, we've got two different options here tonight. We can either vote to terminate the MOU, which would then bring it to October 1st, give the, and then that basically starts the time clock for the city to get a new contract in place. The other option would be to pause this decision today, either refer it to, you know, another council meeting like what Mr. Moffett suggested, or back to finance to have those discussions there. And I think both, both ones have the opportunity to accomplish the same, the same thing, the same two goals. One, getting rid of the MOU and working that into a contract. And then the second goal is, would be to give both of the entities, being SPM and DCHS, an opportunity to continue to meet. You know, they already met last week, the meeting again, you know, next week, just to continue to meet, to give them the opportunity to kind of just talk this out. You know, what does this look like? Is this going to benefit our museums as a whole, and do we want to move forward as one organization? So I think whatever, whatever option we choose, it's got the opportunity to accomplish both of those. And I don't really have a strong opinion on it, but I would prefer, I'd feel better if we either sent it back to finance, or we postponed it to, you know, next council meeting or a couple more council meetings, if for no other reason than, I think, to me, it just feels off to terminate an MOU, or to start the clock, to terminate an MOU, without having that replacement contract in place. And it just, if nothing else, just for the optics of it, and I think the optics, they look off to the general public, but also the staff that are employed by SPM. You know, if we vote to terminate the contract, you know, 90 days, 120 days, you know, whatever, of course, our goal is to get, by the end of that time, to get a contract in place. If, it's just the optics of it and the messaging that that sends to the general public, I don't think is the message that we're trying to send, is that we're terminating the MOU. And so I don't, I don't want to make a motion now to refer it, because I don't want to end debate, but I would probably prefer it either postpone it to, you know, I think Counselor Moffett in his letter said, you know, the June, the first meeting in July, or back to finance, just have those, you keep those conversations moving. Or if not that, maybe you can help me with the verbiage on a motion to, if there was some way that we could, whatever the timeframe is, whether it's 90 days, 120 days, you know, whatever, that that isn't the drop-dead date unless there's been a contract that's been offered with like two weeks to review it. I don't know if that's, if that's something that we could work in. It just feels off to me for us to cancel an MOU that's been, an existing MOU for over 20 years, say, we're starting the 90-day clock or the 120-day clock in this case, and we're hopeful, or we're promising, or you just have to trust us, that we'll have that replacement contract at the end of that timeframe. Because we can, we can hope, we can trust that we can have it done, but ultimately, it's up to the council. And in, you know, in 90 days, 120 days, on October 1st, the council could just say, we're just letting this lie. And there's no more promising or anything like that from your office, or, you know, whatever, that gives the public the correct perception, it gives the staff the correct perception, that literally, the only reason that we're canceling this MOU, or we're even starting this, is to get a contract in place, you know, long-term. And whether that contract is in place with SPM, or it's a contract that's in place with a joint organization between the two, I just, it feels off to me to terminate the MOU without having something, anything.
I think you've asked a very specific parliamentary question about a motion. Can you give me just a little bit more detail of what you would be trying to accomplish?
Yeah, what feels off to me is the possibility that October 1st, because that's where we're at right now, right? October 1st?
Yes.
October 1st could come, and for whatever reason, and no fault of either the city, and no fault of SPM, or no fault of anyone, maybe we don't have a contract in place. Maybe we're still trying to, you know, fine-tune it, or maybe the possibility of the two organizations coming together is looking really, really good, and instead of awarding the, you know, the contract to SPM, we want to award it to the new organization if they join together. What I would like to avoid is leaving it up to a vote on October 1st, whether we're going to extend the contract or not, or extend the MOU. I would feel more comfortable that if we're going to vote on it on October 1st, it's, we're voting it, but we've also given them the opportunity to, you know, to review a contract. I just, it just feels off to me. I just, it just feels off to me that we're doing one before the other and not the two at the same time. So that's why, that's why I said if we refer it back to, you know, finance to continue those discussions, we refer it to a couple council meetings where we can, we can then say, all right, let's, let's start the clock. We've got this contract. But I don't even know what that motion would look like.
The problem that I'm having, Counselor, I think I've got a solution for you. And I just want to confirm it. I may ask for a minute to do that. The, most of what you're describing is not a specific enough question for us to vote on, so it would be like, if this, then that, those are tough. The closest I can come up with is a special or a general order wherein you would automatically place the question of whether to terminate the MOU on a future agenda at some point before the date in question. So if, regardless of, I think this would come, if it'd be a main motion and it would happen after this question's decided, because if it fails, it's moot. But if it passes, you could, I could then recognize you to make a motion that creates a special order that, let's say, on the first meeting in September, the council will consider the question of whether to terminate the MOU. That would immediately put the question back in front of the council at that point. So if you and five other counselors are not satisfied that we are prepared to terminate it, you would then vote no. It would potentially take a majority to do that. It's complex. We have never done something like that before, but it's, it's a little strange, but I think it's the closest I can get to you.
I don't know if I'm following you. So how that, how that differs from, because if, if we pass this tonight with the intent to cancel, on October 1st, it's going to be, we're going to be voting on, oh no, we wouldn't be voting.
It would just end on October 1st.
It wouldn't require a vote. I was thinking that it would come back to the council to, to vote on it. Then so I guess that even.
Wouldn't that motion then go against the motion I just made to?
The, the question in front of the council is whether to terminate the memorandum of understanding on October 1st. That is the question. Your motion, Counselor, change the date at which it would be terminated. So we are giving notice that this, that this will terminate. What I am proposing, a motion, and I'm not recommending it, but a motion Counselor Fantasy could potentially make is to bring the question in front of the council. And I think that my goal here is to answer your, like, rather than not, rather than trust the council that if we, if we're not ready, we will extend it, you can require us to consider whether or not to extend it. Now, why that's a little bit of a reach to do tonight is my understanding of our ordinances is you have the right to agendize that question anyways on September 1st. There is some doubt about that, but not much. I think, and in what world would, I say, Counselor, can't put something on the agenda, particularly if, with even one meeting, you definitely can. So be a little bit moot, but there, there is a mechanism for bringing it, the question back to the council. However, I would, I would ask you to consider that we have placed this as a recurring item on the finance committee agenda, or rather, the finance committee did. So they could recommend an extension at any point, as, as could the council. I don't know that I'm achieving what you asked me to achieve, but setting more complex conditions is something that I'm uncomfortable with. I'll do my best to recognize the motion if you make it, but that's the closest I can get to you.
I, and I don't even know what that, what the motion would look like. I don't know if we, if that accomplishes really what I'm, what I'm looking to accomplish. I just don't want to, what feels off about this is canceling the, terminating the MOU in, you know, X amount of days with the intent of putting this into a long-term contract without having a long-term contract in place, or even offered, or talked about. It just feels, to me, it feels off. And so that's why I was hoping to work something in there where at the end of the October 1st, if a new con, if the city hasn't prepared a new contract and given SPM 14 days to weigh it out, then, then what? I don't, I don't know if that really. How long do you think it would take to get a contract?
Parties that are inclined to agree where the terms are substantially similar, month at most, where this particular situation, what I know of changes that at least I would like to see in it, that I think I can win a broad agreement from the council. Two months of finance committee meetings, throw in a third, because they, that committee usually likes to sit on decisions, especially since a contract would likely involve a dollar amount. If we want to be really conservative, those contracts that have involved the question of a specific dollar amount, animal shelter, long museum, I think those, help me out, comes with five months at, and when those were really tricky. Typically, you have one month of reviewing financials, looking at terms. A month is more than enough time for the other party to review and come back to you. And we would usually be negotiating one party, either myself or the finance committee chair behind the scenes. So three months is perfectly reasonable. Five months is a bit more normal.
Okay. So even, even after the, so if we have until October 1st, for about halfway, three quarters of the way there, at that time, then we could make a motion to extend that?
That's, in fact, I, that's been our past practice.
Right.
I, I think if I'm following your argument, Counselor, that the real question is, is uncomfortable because we're talking about negotiations here and everybody's in the room, but it's, where do you want the leverage to lie? Because if the agreement is terminated, it's terminated and, and the city's driving the bus. And we will decide who gets the contract to operate the city's museums. If there is no termination, if we, if we never terminate the MOU and we just wait until a contract is agreed to by all parties, then the other party, if, if the negotiations break down, they can say, you know, thanks, but no thanks, we're comfortable with the MOU. Now granted, at that point, if we say, well, then we need to end it, then we're starting from the beginning at that point, and then you have to start the 90 day clock. I'm not necessarily making an argument either way, but one gives more leverage to the city, the other gives more leverage to the other party in terms of time. So it's a general rule of contract negotiations. Time in this case, I think, is on the city's side. But again, I want to stress, the city has an interest in affecting a contract here. I think everybody agrees with that.
Right.
So, and, and we have a strong history of negotiating good, strong contracts that have generally won agreement. I don't, I can't recall anybody walking away from our table.
Even fairly recently, you know, I mean, with the, with the entities. Okay.
Counselor Grasky?
I'm just going to ask this because I feel like, you know, it's, I think, I don't want to speak for this whole council, but it is pretty hard to take your motions out of this decision. I think we, as people that live in this city, it's, it's really hard to kind of try to look at this as two businesses merging with the control of funding from said another business in a sense of how to tier it up and how to make it less more personal. But what is the fear, and I don't really know who can answer this, I don't know if Chair you can, but what is the fear of losing a MOU, going into a contractual mode with everyone at the table in discussion on a monthly monitoring, financial, on the, I'm sorry, in the finance committee?
Well, I can't speak to anybody's fears or their motivations. I can say from either party, there are risks. The biggest risk to the city is while we, I think many of the leaders of the city, everybody's expressed some concern, we want to see some changes in the agreement, some strengthening of the relationship. So the biggest risk to the city is that the relationship breaks down through the negotiations. The biggest risk to the other party is, of course, the same, but also that they would have to change the way in which they are used to operating and functioning to meet the city's new and established interest. But that's what negotiation looks like. So best I can answer your question is the same, the fears anybody have is the same fear of any negotiation, uncertainty and lack of power and control that, and that happens. But in any negotiation, everybody gives up a little something.
And it seems as if, you know, at first, there was surprise information, then kind of bundled together and meeting in one meeting. And it sounds like there's progression in these, both of these, I guess, I don't want to call them entities, meeting to start the conversation. And then they also have monitoring from the finance committee as well. So there's still like, there's still investment from the city through this whole process, keeping, you know, an eye on it. I, I'm concerned, like, I, I want to respect Counselor Fantasy here as he does, you know, sit on SPM and has a deeper dive into it. And I was gone last week, and so I apologize for that, or the last city council meeting. But I'm just trying to understand a little bit better about the deepness of the change that feels so hesitant. So maybe that's just, no one can answer that for me. I just, that's what kind of holding me up on not really understanding the business side of this. And I'm coming from a tourism hat as well, like knowing the investment and the promotion there. Like, I wouldn't want, you know, these parts and things that we promote to lack because there wasn't someone in the driver's seat. But it sounds as if that's been extended and that conversation has been had. And so we have said, you know, director coming in, in terms, things like that. I mean, I don't know if this is the place to be discussing all of these details. I just feel as if there is things in motion that these, our discussions are happening, these things can get ironed out, these things can get talked to and by the people that are actually committed to it. I'm not saying I don't have an investment into it, I just don't know as much to be making such a decision on, does an MOU matter? You know, then we go into a contractual situation. It just, I know that's our decision, but at the same time, I feel like we have to kind of take a chance, we have to put a number on it in order to get things moving, or to kind of, maybe there's a better solution than what's actually going on.
There, Counselor Elm?
And I'm hoping my memory serves me right, but kind of to Counselor Fantasy's point is canceling or terminating this MOU prior to having a contract in place. I'd say generally, a lot of contracts that come through finance, they have a date, an end date on it. So therefore, the contract comes six months ahead of time and then we're discussing it. So what's different about this is it never ends. So in order to really move forward with this, you have to put the end date on there. And I think, I think that's where we're at, right? I mean, like, that's what makes us different is contracts usually have an end date and this doesn't. So dynamics are different with this than a normal contract. So, so the perspective of we're ending a contract without a contract in place, I think that maybe brings some clarity to me at least, you know? And I know every contract we go through is a little bit different, but generally, they have an end date and this doesn't. And that's, that's why we're here, I believe.
I, yes, and that's the point I feel most strongly about. I, to the point that I should assert it on this question, that we, if we change nothing else about the MOU, we should put an expiration date on it. So at the very least, you are required to review these documents. This document was created by an entirely different council. There have been amendments on the way, but this is a different world, counselors. That's what happens with every single contract. This particular council has demonstrated an aversion to even long-term contracts, let alone unlimited ones. So my strong recommendation is put a date. I have opinions on what that date should be. I just voted on one, but I mean, if you made it 10 years from now, just put something on there so that it ends. The current question, of course, is to end it on October 31st. To Counselor Grasky's point, we don't know which, October 1st. To Counselor Grasky's point, we don't know what direction this conversation will take. You have a lot of options if you need more time, to give yourselves more time, but make yourselves have these, this conversation. That, to me, is the best form of governance here. The deadline is not for them, they're your museums. The deadline is on you to figure out the best way to govern these museums. I'm, I think this, this doesn't give any requirement to Superior Public Museums, it gives a requirement to you. Counselor Johnson?
So maybe this is my interpretational power of living in a house with a three-year-old and trying to piece things together. What I kind of heard from both Counselor Elm and Counselor Fantasy is that we want to both have a date, but then we also want to have maybe some contingency for SPM. So would a motion to, can we make a motion to the finance committee to have a contract done by a certain date? I mean, essentially, that's the October 1st then, right? Is that, or is that, is that separate?
Yes. You can make a motion to discharge the finance committee to recommend a contract for the public museums. Now, it's a very loosey-goosey motion because it requires them to answer your question. What is your recommendation on a contract? The answer to that question may be nothing at all, but it will require the finance committee chair to report back to you at a certain point on that question.
Okay. I need to think about that for a second or let somebody else take it from there.
Counselor Sweeney?
There is a mechanism in place that we've used previous contracts. Whether we had a date or not, we negotiated and we had a date end. And if we didn't meet that date, we extended the, whatever type of arrangement we had with the organization for another month or two. I don't see what our reluctance is. We now have four months, 120 days to develop a contract between these two. And this isn't, this isn't a 9,000-page contract here, okay? We've got, we've got a track record, we know how to do it. If it doesn't work, if we can't get it done, and many times it has, the city has been very good and the finance committee has been done, we have waited to try and answer some of the questions for the, for the other's party. It hasn't been held up by the city nor the finance committee. Many times, it's held up and we've graciously done that for them. So whether we had to go, if we're 120 days, we had to go to 150, we would do that. But my point is, we're trying to cover all contingencies without developing a starting date. We've got to start this and move on. We can easily develop one in 120 days. I don't think that's going to be difficult at all. But if something does come up, we'll extend it for another, if it has to be 30 days, it's 30 days.
Counselor Elm?
Sorry. So yeah, there's the fear of the unknown moving forward for, for those thinking, what, you know, what's this going to turn into? But what are the next steps, Mayor, here for, for the museums? Who are they talking to? Like, after this meeting ends, how can they just jumpstart this? Are they speaking with Director Kadat? Is, what are the next steps so we can get this ball rolling, so they can answer these questions and know that our museums are supported?
The museums have several next steps and they can make some choices about who they talk to. So the Superior Public Museums can, of course, continue to speak to the Douglas County Historical Society. If that leads to a merger, then the leadership of that organization or the proto-leadership of it will begin talking to the city. Those conversations, I think, would initiate with me, unless and until I delegate that somewhere else. How, if they choose not to do that, if they don't want to talk to Douglas County Historical Society, then they're going to need to communicate with the finance committee. The finance committee will discuss this question at their next meeting and at every subsequent meeting until they are satisfied with an answer. This is listed as their recurring business now. So I think they can choose to work directly with the, it's work with all three, just communicate with all three about what are everybody's interests. I'm not going to express every interest the city has at this meeting tonight, but I'll, I'll be pretty straightforward about what the city's interests are. That's, that's how I usually handle negotiations. Those are the three parties they should communicate with. The question, Counselor Herrick?
Just one more question. I just want to say that, you know, I look at all these people, they have a love for what they're doing, you know, for our museums. And I, and what's nice about it is that, you know, anytime they can walk away, but they don't, they have the desire to continue to do what they're doing and even approve upon it. So my, my thanks to you guys, so.
The question, Counselor Fantasy?
So to kind of piggyback on Counselor Johnson's, you know, point is, would it be in order to set some kind of guideline where, like, if I'm working backwards, the October 1st council meeting is when it would be, you know, terminated? If we had a contract presented to SPM by September 1st, which would then go to the finance committee meeting on September 19th, which would then refer to the city council meeting on October 1st?
What's happening on those dates?
So like September 1st, a contract would be presented to SPM, which, or we would have a contract, you know, ready to be reviewed. And then on September 19th, they would go to the finance committee meeting. And then at that 19th, the finance committee can make a recommendation, one way or the other, or to just extend the MOU?
Well, the problem with that is you can't compel anybody to write a contract. And, I mean, you could present one. And, I mean, you could present one. We would likely have one if, if nothing else is happening. You can require the committee to make you a recommendation. That's, that's what you can do, on any subject at all.
That's it. Okay.
If they, if they can't come up with one, they can't come up with it. They would be required by Robert's Rules of Order to take a vote, and then the chair would have to present the results of that vote?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that really accomplishes what, what I'm looking for. I, I think what we have to do is just keep an eye on the date, and either someone from Finance make that recommendation for an extension, or, or I'll, I'll just do it. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Counsel Moffett.
Yeah, I was just saying, we're making this really complicated, and, and somebody can just put it on the agenda and extend it by the end of August or something, if they feel it's necessary. I would say that there's a lot of pre-assumption here, that like, when the city constructs a list of its needs and puts together a contract, that that contract will absolutely be SPM, but it could be a combination of the two, or it could be DCHS, or the city could decide to go with another organization, or the city could manage it directly. And so like, there are still other options on the table. And so I know if I was, you know, working for SPM, I would just say, like, please extend it until I can sign a contract, and then we can just cancel the MOU at the same time, because that's certainly easy from both sides. But that doesn't allow the city to have the conversation about how have the millions of dollars of taxpayers' dollars been spent over the last couple decades, and how are things going there, and what things do we want to work on improving, and like, what's going on? And so like, there are larger conversations at stake, too. And, you know, the, the city has a whole bunch of options here. So I don't think we should necessarily limit ourselves to, to one or two.
The question, the question again is whether to terminate Superior Public Museum's memo of understanding on October 1st, 2024. Are there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you, counselors.
All right. Item 10.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Counsel Johnson, second by Counsel Herrick. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 10.2, I'm recommending the approval of an amend-the-premise and one-day cabaret license for Dodgy's East End Tavern, located at 2114 East 5th Street, for a retirement party on June 8th.
Motion is by Counsel Fantasy, second by Counsel Sweeney. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.3, I am recommending the approval of an amend-the-premise license, application for Hootie's Bar, located at 2126 East 5th Street, for the event Kickoff Summer Bash on June 22nd.
Motion is by Counsel Sweeney, second by Counsel Fantasy. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.4, I am recommending the approval of a request for unlimited transfer of full-service retail outlet by producer Earth Rider Brewing for the event Superior Choice Credit Union Lot Party, located at 2817 Tower Avenue, on June 22nd, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., for the on-premise consumption of beer.
Motion is by Counsel Fantasy, second by Counsel Herrick.
You'll see in front of you an updated application that was just turned in by Earth Rider, correcting the date to June 20th. So.
Did you read June 20th?
I know I read June 22nd, because do they require any?
Is, is there objection to clarifying that the event is on June 20th? If not, the motion will reflect that the event takes place on June 20th. Counsel Fantasy.
Can you just give me the 30-second, like, version of what it means to request an unlimited transfer of full-service retail outlet? I don't think I've ever seen this before.
So this is brand-new, and was part of the very large changes that the Department of Revenue had through the 2023 Act 73 by the governor that came into play May the 1st. And so we, me and producers and everyone have been learning a lot more about those changes. It offers producers, breweries, wineries, distilleries that create a certain amount of capacity in their last year to apply for a state-issued license for full-service retail of their products and other products outside or inside their production premise. So it's a lot. So what that means is a producer, a brewery, is able to apply across town. The state wants our approval to do that. Second, they could request a full-service retail license for a special event, and that's what we're seeing here. So this is something that's never been presented to the council before, and we don't actually have any policy or process around this. But because this was a small event, it was coming up just in a couple of weeks, I said, I'm going to bring it to council. I wrote a little bit more about it on my memo, and this is something that we will likely, I want to bring up and bring to you for licensing and fees next, because this is not the only event that Earth Rider has turned in. They have about 10 or 12 other events. They like to do the same type of thing across the city for different events throughout the summer.
Okay. So if I understand right, the, the difference, or the unique thing here is that Earth Rider produces their own beer. The alternative would be Superior Choice would buy Earth Rider's beer from Keyport Liquor, Bellknap Liquor, and then?
So, no, not really, because, so what we've had so far for this type of event, if you wanted to sell beer at your event, you could be offered a temporary Class B license issued by me, or, you know, as a municipality. But that's only offered for certain types of group, nonprofits, churches, you know, a lodge. Those types of organizations are the only ones that have been able to qualify for Temp Class B from us. So this is very new in the fact that we would be offering for a special event, either on private property or city property, which is some of the ones that they're sending in next to sell beer at some of the concerts in town. It's a private retailer offering retail sales at events. So that's new. But it would only be an option for someone with a producer's license.
Sure. Thank, thank you for breaking that down. Counsel Johnson.
I turned my light on, so I'll talk anyway, but I think you answered my question right at the end there. The producer couldn't be a liquor store establishment, it would be specifically for that. So like, a bar couldn't apply for that and then go host an event somewhere else?
That's correct. It would be for people with the producer's license through the state.
Any further questions? Or discussion? Questions whether to approve the license? This is a license, a transfer of their license.
We would be, we would be giving our approval, that the governing body approves this, and we would forward their application to the state. The state does final approval, they issue the license.
Questions whether to approve?
Last, last thing, real quick. Does this set any precedent for any changes that we might want to make to this in the future?
None whatsoever. It's a non, it's a novel decision. Obviously, you're making a decision about this question, but certainly, if we follow the process articulated by the clerk, we're going, we're going to create a policy. We're not bound by any past decision. We can, we can, we can consider new policy, policy changes, we can consider unique circumstances. If they apply for the exact same license for the exact same, uh, uh, party, you ought to have a reason for voting it down, but you're going to need a reason. So it's, you're not creating policy tonight. You're deciding a unique question. Counsel Fantasy?
Thank you, Chair. Clerk Bond, are there many other establishments eligible, in your opinion, to apply for this?
Here, within the city, no. We have a couple of wineries that are currently in the licensing process of moving to a producer's level license. This does not, though, if there are other producer-level licenses outside of a municipality, if a producer from the village wants to start coming in, they would be sending it to us. But that's a, you know, that's not a big amount.
They would send it to us or to their governing body?
If their event is here in Superior, or they want to have that outlet store here in Superior, outside of their production premise.
Any further questions? Or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.5, I am recommending approval of the preliminary 2024-2025 alcohol report.
Motion is by Counsel Ladine, second by Counsel Moffett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Is there any further business by public? Or, no. Counsel, it's just a, a heads up, and I apologize for keeping you here a little bit later. I have asked the clerk to work on an ordinance change, and I was only reminded because it came up very briefly earlier tonight about how items are added to our agenda. It's, the ordinance is very vague, and possibly implies that absolutely anybody at all could add absolutely anything to our agenda, which is obviously, and that's not been a huge problem for us, but it has come up. And so I'm going to propose an ordinance specifying who and how things are added. Don't worry, all of you will, counselors will absolutely have the ability to add things to the agenda, the administration as well. Not really sure beyond that, so that will be a discussion. I will look to you to participate in for where we set those boundaries beyond this body, if you want to allow anybody beyond this body to add things to our agenda. I just, I just didn't want you surprised by that when I just drop it on a council agenda sometime in the next couple of months. Feel free to talk to me about that in private, if you have ideas, or, just anytime you see me. Any further business? Then we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.